We did programs Twenty First Century Learn and we provide it to the community. So if you want to advance in your career or start a new business, you can learn everything. We have computer classes where you can learn how to operate the own system. You can anywhere, anything from Microsoft Word to Excel, we show you how to do that. You could book a librarian, that's part of our programming. We have great programs for kids, all ages, teenagers, sometimes sleepovers. We offer so much to the community. During the summer when school is out, we have an amazing summer reading program for children, teens, and adults. I participated and I got these cool mug. And my daughter participated, she's a teenager and she got this highlighting set, it's really cute. It's a way for kids to compete within themselves, to challenge them to read more books. I would like to add, become a part of the library. It's an amazing opportunity for you to learn and grow and meet new people. We have lots of opportunities for your children. We have magazines, you don't have to buy them, just come, visit the library, support what we have. Also, if you have books, CDs, videos, we accept those also. Just bring them in and this will help support the programs that we have at our local libraries.
We hope you enjoyed this edition of Cumberland Matters and that you will join us again to learn more about county government. You can also-
If this group could come to order, we welcome you to our February 16th meeting. We thank you for coming out on a cold winter night like this. So with that in mind, we're going to ask Commissioner Jeanette Council to have our invocation and our pledge.
Stand with me, please. Join me for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight to conduct the business of the citizens of Cumberland County. At this meeting, as with every other meeting, decisions are made which affect the lives of many people. We have with us tonight in the audience many concerned citizens. There is a storm brewing outside and we ask for the health and welfare and safety of all of our citizens. Help us to make the very best decisions that we can. Keep us aware always of your goodness and your blessings. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight I have the pleasure of recognizing two of our citizens in the agricultural area. Standing with me tonight is Lisa Childress, our Agriculture Extension Director, one that does a great job for our county. This time I'd like to ask Chris Hall to come forward. Chris, if you would stand here with us for just a minute, let me tell all these people something about you. Chris is the 2014 recipient of the Cumberland County Farm Bureau Outstanding Young Farmer Award. He is the son of James Ray and Kim Hall. Chris is also the brother of proud sister Brooke Gillis. He is a grandson of the late Mr. W.J. Monk and Rachel Hall. Chris is a fourth generation farmer in the Beaver Dam community. He graduated from Fayetteville High School in 2005 where he was a member of the FFA. In 2010, Chris graduated from North Carolina State University Ag Institute. While a student at North Carolina State, he was involved in the Agronomy Club, the Ag Institute Club, and a member of the North Carolina State Chapter of Ducks Unlimited. Chris farms with his brother, James Ray, and his uncle Ricky. The family farm consists of about 3,700 acres. Chris farms 250 acres on his own where he produces corn, soybean, wheat, and watermelons. Chris has been described as a hardworking young man. During his spare time, Chris enjoys fishing and hunting with his oldie but goldie hunting dog, Max. Congratulations, Chris. We're very proud of you.
I'd like to thank the Kiwanis Club, Farm Bureau, my family, all my professors at NC State, my teachers at Cape Fear, and just everybody along the way to, you know, help me, taught me to hard work. And growth in agriculture is a good thing, we've got to feed these people, not to count the jobs.
This time I'd like to ask Mr. Glenn Jernigan to join me and Lisa up here. I can't read all this stuff about Glenn Jernigan because I'd be here all night. But I will say this, I'm going to tell you a lot about him and I'll try to cover some of the other points very quickly. The name Glenn Jernigan is often associated with public service to our state and our community. However, some may not be aware of Glenn's long history of support to the agricultural industry on a county, state, and national level. For over 25 years, Glenn Jernigan has served as the Chairman of the Kiwanis Farm City Committee in Cumberland County. Glenn has ensured that farmers and agriculture are represented each year at the annual luncheon and no detail has ever been missed. He is passionate that the luncheon be held at the agricultural center where farmers and producers frequent. He has often shared, this is the place our farmers feel most comfortable and this is the place the luncheon belongs. Through his political connections, he has always ensured the banquet had noteworthy speakers, which have included the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture, Tom Vilsack, North Carolina Agricultural Commissioner Steve Troxler, and former North Carolina Agricultural Commissioner Jim Graves. Glenn always adds an extra touch to the event by ensuring that the sound of live bluegrass music is in the air and the ever-popular prizes of hams, cakes, and I can't even say this like Glenn does, pies. Glenn serves as a lobbyist for the Alliance, which has proven to be extremely effective in legislative efforts. Glenn's work with the Ag Alliance and much of the group's achieved success can be directly attributed to his great working relationship with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services and the leadership of the North Carolina General Assembly, especially the agricultural committees in the House and the Senate. And I could tell you all of the organizations that he is a member of, I could tell you all of the professional and civic organizations that he belongs to, and all of the awards and honors and degrees that he has earned and his recognitions, but we'd be here for a long time. But what I want to say about Glenn Jernigan is he's one that, if his wife could be here tonight, Jane, she would be bursting with pride. He has two children, Lisa and Glenn Jr., two granddaughters, and twin grandsons. And if it wasn't for Glenn and his dedication to the agricultural community, I don't know what this would be like in Cumberland County. So Glenn, congratulations on your induction into the Hall of Fame.
On behalf of the farmers and the farm panelists here in North Carolina and across the nation that produce the most cost-effective food in the world, I give them thanks tonight. Thank you.
It is my pleasure to present this to Ms. Linda McNeil. She's retiring, she said she retired in January already. But you know, one thing is if you went down to the headquarters library, you may have seen her, but you would not have heard her. She does not speak much, but she has worked tremendously for this county. And tonight she was like, "I'm not sure I want to go there, there's too many people." Because she never wants to be in the spotlight. But presented to Linda McNeil, Cumberland County Library, in recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County, November the first, 1979 through January first, 2015, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, February 16, 2015. Thank you so very much.
Myra started as a civilian, completed law enforcement training, served as an SRO, road patrol deputy, became a supervisor, became a captain, became supervisor of the evidence station, ultimately served as a major over the entire patrol division with the sheriff's office. That's quite an accomplishment. Congratulations. Let me read you plaque, Myra. Presented to Myra Watson, Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, in recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County, May the first, 1983 to January the first, 2015, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, February the 16th, 2015. You earned it. Congratulations and thanks for what you did for our county.
I'd just say one thing, that it's been an honor and a pleasure to work for the citizens of Cumberland County and I thank you for that. And I started with Otis Jones was my first sheriff. He was a great man. And then Martha Bedsoe and then Sheriff Butler was the one that promoted me and I thank them all for the opportunity to work at the sheriff's office. Thank you.
And before we begin, I want to explain a few things to the audience. Number one, we have had some technical problems since we got our timer back from the Crown in the public hearing, it doesn't work right here. Yeah, maybe they wore it out. But the one on the podium does work. So you will be noticing the lights, of course, when it reaches the yellow light, you will have a minute and a half, you will have talked for a minute and a half. You have 30 seconds left, is that correct? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, now, from what I understand, because we had 24 people, I believe it was, or more signed up, we only allow 15 minutes for our public comment period. And you can see that would be less than a minute and a half. So before the meeting, some of the proponents and opponents got together and decided that they would have four speakers apiece and we will give you two minutes, if that's okay with everybody. And I hope it is because I understand it was okay from the leader of the proponents and the leader of the opponents. So thank you for that cooperation, we appreciate it very much. I would like to ask one question, is Gary Blackburn here?
Blackwell.
Blackwell, I'm sorry. Is he here? Okay, well that eliminates that other one because he wanted to talk about something else other than what you wanted to talk about. Sally, would you check to make sure he's not back there? Is he back there?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that cooperation. With that, I'm going to ask Manager Cannon to read the rules of the open comment period.
Yes, sir. No time may be yielded to another speaker by another speaker. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from their lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Speakers will be courteous in their presentation and avoid personal attacks. Anything written or any supporting documents may be left with the clerk to the board.
Okay. I will open the public comment period and Madam Clerk, you will call the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Rachel Milner.
Hello, I'm Rachel Milner. I live at 970 Old Vander Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. And if there's one thing that we can all be able to thank Sanderson Farm Chicken Processing Plant for, is that property taxes will be dropped. Of course, that will be because many of us will be having property that is largely without value. A document by the market analysis at Greenfield Advisors lists value drops up to 88% for homes adjacent to a plant's area of operation. Impacts like these are compounded if the plant is a producer of biogas, which chicken processing plants are among the heaviest producers of. As someone who is both a homeowner in this area and a local real estate agent, you can see how this is something I might find concerning. But the fact is, this affects me and all of us on a much deeper level than a financial one. I'm not only a new homeowner, but also a new mother. Like a parent, I want my daughter to grow up in a safe and ecological, clean environment. UPC Online quotes researcher Dee Bell saying that for every pound of feed, a pound of manure is produced. A truck full of feed means a truckload of waste that can pollute our rivers and streams. This leads to a chain reaction that kills fish and fills the water with nitrate. This can cause a horrific blood disorder in infants, which John T. Hollerman, writer for the Environmental Law Journal, refers to as blue baby disease. What this comes down to is many Cumberland County residents living in unsellable homes, breathing in noxious fumes, and not even being able to trust the safety of the water from their own faucets. We need to let Sanderson Farms know that we and other families don't want their plants devaluing our homes and poisoning our neighborhood. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. Grady Memms.
My name is Grady Memms, I live 602 Helen Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. To the Honorable Mr. Kenny Feds, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, and the City Council, if you're here, this letter is in support of the Sanderson Farm Initiative. We need jobs and we need them right now in this community. We have had, more than 15 years, please vote yes on this initiative for this Cumberland County. If you are a good Samaritan, if you had your Sunday School lesson yesterday, you need, realize that you need to look out for your neighbor. It's not just about you. I looked around this room, I didn't see not one person in here look like he was in need. We got to look out for the people that's in need. I went to the unemployment office, I seen all those young people in there that need jobs. We got to forget about ourselves. And I'm going to do this for them. It says, "Who's on the right side?" God said, "Separate and divide the sheep from the goats." Okay? There are goats on the left, sheep's on the right. Okay? We got to prepare. He said to the brother, I'm saying, brothers, sisters, councilor, he said, "When I was hungry, you fed me. When I was thirsty, you gave me drink. When I was a stranger, you took me in, naked you closed me." And then he said, "When I was sick, you gave me first aid. He gave me some of that Obamacare, some of that Medicare. When I broke, busted, and disgusted, you need to give me a job. You need to get a job. We need some jobs and we need them now." And then, you know what God said? He said, "The poor gonna be with you always." You know why they gonna be with you? He left them here for people like you and I who have to be a test. That's a test for us, because we're supposed to take care of those people. But we don't do that. All we think about is ourselves. Boy, that's a bad thought.
Thank you, Mr. Memms.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is-
Hey, help us out there, Mr. E. You're a good Samaritan.
Our next speaker is Mr. Casey Groover.
Good evening. My name is Casey Groover and I live at 2162 Fields Road. And the potential spray fields for Sanderson Farms are approximately 30 feet from my back door and 50 feet from my well, and 10 feet away from another shallow well located on my property. The gumbo clay in this area will not allow the water to permeate the ground, it will run off into our waterways. I know because I have studied horticulture and am an alumni from NC State Agricultural Institute. Once the water and air are befouled by Sanderson Farms, it will have harmful effects way beyond Cedar Creek, it will just float down the Cape Fear River. I am concerned for my health and the health of thousands of other people when our wells will be contaminated by five million gallons of wastewater that will spray each week. As a mental health professional, I wonder who is going to pay for our healthcare costs due to the contaminated water. So I ask you Commissioners to raise your hand if you would want one of these contaminated spray fields to be located in your backyard. Please raise your hand if you'd like for one of these spray fields to be contaminated in your backyard. Would anyone raise their hand if you would like a spray field, a contaminated spray field, to be located in your backyard? Please raise your hand. Therefore, since the majority of you, all of you, did not raise your hand, we assume that you concur with the opponents of Sanderson Farms and love thy neighbor as thyself and vote no to this incentive package. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groover. Next speaker?
Willie Williams, Mr. Willie Williams.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Willie Williams. I live at 1165 Sand Hill Road, 1165 Sand Hill Road, Hope Mills, North Carolina. Now, I would listen to well water, 12 foot is a shallow well, you drinking surface water anyway, first place. Okay, number two, I once, when I was younger and starting a job, trying to find a job, I found a low-rate job and I went out to buy me a car in order to get to work. Somebody told me, said, "That's a raggedy, the car don't buy that car." So I said to myself, "If I get that car in my hand, then if I have problems with it, I can work on that car and straighten out the problems." Sanderson Farm, if you get it in your hand, if there are problems, work them out. Number two. Okay, I look at it like this here, you Commissioners here, very intelligent people. Hey, I'll be the last one to say that you don't know what you're doing. I know you know what you're doing. And in my heart, I know you're going to do the right thing. When I ride up down the street every day seeing poor people that don't have jobs, kids walking around nasty looking because their parents don't have a job, in your hand, you hold the future of every young person around here that don't have a job, you hold that person in your hand, you also have that wife in your hand and those two children. When you go to sleep at night, think about it. Think about it, can you sleep with that amount of people in your hand that need jobs, that you could do something about and that you will not do it if you decide to vote the opposite? Now, if you vote the right way, in the future, you will be able to sleep at night and stick your chest out. If you don't, God knows what's going to happen to you, I don't know. But I do believe you're going to do the right thing and vote for this incentive package. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Hank Parfitt.
My name is Hank Parfitt and I reside at 112 Hay Street in beautiful downtown Fayetteville. I've been in the practice of medicine as a surgeon since 1982 until my retirement, December 31st. And perhaps the most important thing that I learned as a resident and early in my practice is that one must weigh the risks as well as the benefits of doing surgery. And if the risks are too great and the benefits are too small, then it may be best to not do the operation, no matter how much I might want to help that patient or how much I might want to do that operation. Now, I'm not a businessman, but I imagine a large business project is very similar, especially when you're making a decision for the entire community. So I'm- So I'm asking that you be sure that you have weighed the risks as well as the benefits. From what I have read and heard, I'm not sure that we know all the risks. And I would hope that you would solicit an unbiased environmental study so that you know what those risks are. Please do not take any chances with the quality of our water or our air. Bad air, bad water affects everyone equally, rich and poor, young and old, and black and white. So please consider that as you make your decision and say no to Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Parfit. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Brayden Brown.
My name is Brayden Brown, and I am nine years old and in fourth grade, and live on 910 Old Vander Road. I want to speak about how this chicken plant could affect me and my siblings, me, my siblings, and my dogs. My parents built a house on Old Vander Road to give my siblings and I land to run around and explore. They both grew up with lots of land in Iowa. I've learned online that the chicken plant and chicken farms could affect the clear air we currently play in at my house. I like to play in the woods in our backyard, and I don't want to breathe in yucky smelling air or have feathers all around. My little sister only, is only two, and I don't want her to play outside and that either. I also heard that this could affect the water in the area, and we live on a well. That means my whole family, including my two dogs, could drink contaminated water. Would you want your kids or grandkids to have, to worry about unsafe water and air? Please think about how this will affect me and the other kids in the area. Are more low-paying jobs worth putting my health and quality of life at risk? As a big brother, I need to stand up and speak to protect my sister and as she grows up. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. Christopher Davis.
Good evening, Commissioner Edge, other county Commissioners. My name is Christopher Glenn R. Davis. I live at 6072 Lakeway Drive here in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and I am in favor of the Sanderson Farms initiative package. And I just wanna read three points, and I'm gonna sit down. But before that, I just wanna tell you that I'm really proud of the fact that our community's having this conversation, and I hope that it's the beginning of many hard conversations that move us forward as a community that range from race to financial establishment to new businesses, to recreation, everything that is important, that we say that is important to our community. We need to have these kind of heated debates. We have to. We can't make decisions that no one knows about, and then everyone's mad when the results come out. We need to have open debates, and we as citizens have to do our job to be here, to listen, and to give our input. I'm gonna read these three points, and I'm gonna sit down. Number one, you have to make an important vote tonight, and the vote should be based on empirical data, proven performance, and real results. Not unfounded fear, not personal or selfish motives, not things that defend our own personal initiatives. Number two, I encourage and implore you to be courageous in your decision. Do what builds Fayetteville's most important, most at risk demographic, the less fortunate and the most vulnerable. Do the thing that moves the entire county forward. Don't do what supports two or three or the minority, and then exclude the rest who really are trying to break into a better way of life. The final point is, finally, please understand that your decision tonight to approve the Sanderson Farms Initiative Plan makes a resounding statement to the greater majority of the citizens who aren't really aware of all the details, as well as to the companies that we want to draw here. We want companies and corporations to understand how important business is to us. Sanderson Farms is the highest ranking company that we would have here, and so if you can upgrade the footprint of our economics, of our tax base, then we need to do that. Vote for the package. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Reverend Mark Rowden.
My name is Mark Rowden. I live at 987 Eastman Road here in Cumberland County. To all of the Commissioners, to our Chairman, thank you all for this opportunity. I wanna, first of all, commend nine-year-old Brandon for his courage to stand here and speak about what he believes, and I hope and pray that he watched closely when Mr. Christopher Hall stood and received an award for agriculture. And Mr. Hall stood, and he thanked a lot of people for affording him an opportunity for hard work. He was praised and commended for hard work, and at the close of his speech, if you all were listening carefully, he said that we have to feed these people. And there are a lot of other Chris Halls in Cumberland County who are unemployed, who only want the opportunity to be afforded that opportunity, to be able to stand and say, "It's hard work, and I've been given an opportunity for hard work." But not only do they want to just feed people, they want to feed their families. And I'm not asking for four county Commissioners to raise their hand tonight in support of this incentive, but I'm asking for all seven to raise your hands for this incentive. And even in the report, we know that in Cedar Creek, not only does it bring jobs and is good and healthy for the economy, but they're willing to even fund fifty percent of transportation, which we so desperately need. I am for and support the incentive, and I ask you to do the same. God bless you.
Got all the speakers?
Point of information, Mr. Chairman. I'm not red or green, but I did sign up in the clerk's office today to speak. I'd like to make a few remarks. You know, I did not...
You didn't know that they were negotiating out, sir?
I don't know who's negotiating.
Okay. All right, come on, I'll have you speak for two minutes, sir. Give your name and address.
Yes. My name is Jim McKay. I live at 1547 Boroughs Drive, and basically, I wanted, just a point of information. I've heard quite a bit of dialogue and reference to the farm program. One of the things that I have not heard is that the economic impact that this project would have on the county. Now, I know that they're gonna invest ninety-five million dollars, but a ninety-five million dollar investment by a company has the impact of three, two-hundred-and-eighty-five million dollars. Shall I repeat that? Two-hundred-and-eighty-five million dollar economic impact in Cumberland County. Now, that is a phenomenal investment to make sure that we protect. New York State had a TV commercial touting about, they got fifteen companies who invested sixty-five million dollars in the state as part of the Economic Development Plan in 2014. That's the statewide. This is one county with a two-hundred-and-eighty-five million dollar economic investment in this community. Number two, we don't hear about the fact that the jobs that are being offered have health benefits. They have paid sick leave, they have paid vacation, they have a credit union, they have funeral leave, they have stock options, and also, they have an opportunity for individuals to move up in the training position to other positions. So you're not dealing with a small company here. You're dealing with a Fortune 500 company, has stockbrokers, I mean, stock people on their board who would not allow their name to be dismerched by polluting a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment period. We will move on to the approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions?
There are no changes.
Mr. Fairclough?
Mr. Chair, I would ask that in view of the weather, in view of the fine people who have come out tonight, that we move item number four up ahead of number three, and try to get everybody home safely as much as we can.
Second, second motion.
There's been a motion and a second to move item four to item number three. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion?
Unanimous.
Thank you. With that in mind, do we need a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Item number two, consent agenda, any items to be pulled?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and second, approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Item number, well, Ms. Cannon, I should turn this over to you. Item number four.
Item number four is consideration of an offer of economic development incentives to Sanderson Farms. Mr. Moorfield.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the memo that's included in your agenda package restates the incentives proposal that was advertised in advance of the public hearing held out the crown, that remains unchanged. The only other information that is being provided at this stage is I have addressed issues relating to the appraisal, and because I think that's important in terms of consideration of selling the property at its fair market value as part of the incentives proposal. The county got the, three of the four parcels appraised back in September. At that time, based on discussions that I'd had with Russ Rogers, and we didn't know specifically what property, but knew that it would be on parts for all of the three, the three back parcels, not the parcel that fronts on Cedar Creek Road, but the back parcels. I got an appraisal of that, asked for a commercial appraisal of that, because at that time, we really didn't have a good sense for what the market value was. The, and that was not in terms of an offer being made to Sanderson Farms, nor was an offer ever been of those numbers been made to Sanderson Farms. The appraisals, the hundred-year flood plain that's shown on two of those parcels was not appraised. It was not included in, no value was placed on it. That was based on our understanding at that time with Mr. Rogers that the company had no interest in the area and the flood plain, so that a value should be placed on those at some point if this goes forward. One of the parcels, and I'm not sure what happened, but the, it was not appraised as a commercial property, it was appraised as residential property. All four of the parcels comprising the industrial park were annexed by the city, there's no question about that. All four of the parcels were zoned by the city, H1, heavy industrial, consistent with the zoning that the county had on those parcels prior to the annexation and in accordance with the agreement we reached. So the only thing that I would recommend to the board, and that's in the memo, is if you do approve an offer of incentives, and at such point, if that is accepted by Sanderson Farms, or there's any further discussion with Sanderson Farms about it, direct staff to go forward and get an appraisal of the specific property that Sanderson may identify for its purposes, because I really don't think we have done that yet.
Okay, so the, just to make sure we're clear, the first motion is to approve the incentives, and if that goes forward with a positive vote, then the second one is, the second motion is to obtain an appraisal of the property, a new appraisal of the property.
If Sanderson does indicate that it wants to negotiate further or wants to accept incentives, if Sanderson doesn't have any interest in the proposal at this point, there would be no reason to do it, but I just want, I just think we need to be upfront with Sanderson as far as the valuation, and make sure that we're doing it properly.
Mr. Keith?
Mr. Moorfield, when an incentive package like this is approved, is there normally a time limit associated with it, or will we need to put something like that in a motion?
In thirty-four years of doing this, it's the first time I've been involved in one where the company wasn't waiting on it right away, so there's never, I've never seen that done. It can be done, certainly. I would not make it too tight at this point, because, I mean, we certainly don't know what the posture of this is anymore.
But at the same time, we don't want to have this incentive package going on into perpetuity.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question. Here on in the memo background and whatnot, the company's obligations, the county's obligations, this is inclusive of the incentive package, all of this would need to be stated tonight, sir?
Yes, if you would like for me just to put for the record, just read that in quickly, I can do that, and that would be the incentives proposal.
And then, if you read it tonight, then the motion will be made to present the incentive package.
Yes, sir.
Let, I think, I personally would like for you to do that, sir, and then the motion be made.
Yes, sir, with the board's permission. The basic terms of the Economic Development Incentives Agreement proposed by the county, and is advertised for the public hearing on this matter that's already been held, are as follows. "The company's obligations will be that Sanderson Farms, Inc., will spend at least ninety-five million dollars to construct and equip a modern poultry processing plant in the county's Cedar Creek Industrial Park in the city of Fayetteville." That's the project. "The project will employ at least nine-hundred-and-seventy-five employees within three years of commencing its operations. Not less than sixty percent of the company's employees at this site will be residents of Cumberland County. The company will not contract with any producer for the production of chickens on sites located within ten miles of the project, or within one mile of the Cape Fear River in anywhere in Cumberland County. The company will inform the county and city managers of any notices of violation it receives from Deaner for any of its operations in Cumberland County." "The county's obligations are as follows. As an economic development incentive proposal for the company to undertake this project, the county will sell to the company the land in the Cedar Creek Industrial Park that the company identifies for the project at its fair market value, subject to the upset bid process, and grant the company a cash incentive equivalent to fifty percent of county general property taxes paid by the company on the assessed value of the improvements constructed on the real property and the personal property and equipment used therein for each of the first nine years that the project complies with all the terms of the agreement. The estimated, and again, this is just an estimate, the estimated total value of these cash incentive payments is two-point-five million dollars. And I'll point out that the other portions of the incentive that were advertised in conjunction with the joint public hearing held with the city were the city's proposal. So the other things that were on the advertisement related to the city are purely a portion of the city's proposal if this goes forward."
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, sir, I would like to make a motion. I would like to move that the incentive package that was presented by our county attorney be presented to Sanderson Farms for possible development and future employment here in Cumberland County.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Mr. Evans, would you consider a thirty-day or sixty-day time limit on this?
No, let's do it, let's do this now.
Okay, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, thank you so very much. You know, the newspapers portrayed that I was the swing vote on this, and, you know, they're out there to sell newspapers and all of that. There is no such thing as a swing vote. There are seven of us up here, and we're all voting what we believe is right for this county. I've had the opportunity to talk with a number of our citizens throughout this community, both for and against, but I want to tell you this, and I'll just, just a few minutes just to be able to do this. There is no us against them, there is no red against green, there is no rich against poor. There is only this community. poor. There is only this community. And what we all want, what is best for our community. You know, one of the things that, as we've sat here and listened, and this is just for my fellow commissioners, because, let me put something to rest. I only came on this board in December, but to listen to this community believe that these fellow commissioners and ones before me have not done anything to bring jobs to this community is wrong. They have worked long and hard and tirelessly to be able to do that. And so for anybody to think otherwise, I think your judgment is misplaced. But there's a bigger question is why these companies don't come. And number of you all who've gotten my emails and talked to me, I've told you that we have to have a long and frank discussion about what our community is. What it is, what do we want it to be, and how we get there. And with that in mind, this has been a hard decision. As I sat and talked to everyone, I understand everybody has their interest in, and sometime our interest ourself, and that's to be understood. But I will tell you that everyone that I talked to, you came across, you gave your ideas, you did it in a polite and gracious manner. And I think that's to be said for our community, because the people who don't come, don't know the people in our community. It is an outstanding community. People who are here, we love it. And all of us, you know, if I asked everybody in this building tonight, whether they believe we wanted jobs, everybody would raise their hand. If we wanted better companies or companies, everybody would raise their hand. But what happens tonight is everybody has to look through the lenses, through their own lenses, as to what they believe Sanderson Farms brings to this community. And, you know, sitting here at the end of the day, you know, as I'd struggled back and forth, and I listened, I've heard soils, I've ridden through the property, I've talked to everybody, I've talked about jobs. But one of the things is that at the end of the day, it's the greater good. And I do believe in the greater good, and I believe in the greater good for all of our citizens. And with that in mind, I know that in my heart of hearts, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. Somebody asked me today what was going to happen in 20 or 30 years. I can't tell you that. I don't have a crystal ball. I can only take what information I have in front of me and make what I believe to be the best decision. There are some who's going to agree with me and some who don't agree with me. But at the end of the day, you know, I hope I have your respect that I sat and listened and based upon all of that, made the best decision that I thought for this county tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have anything they want to say? Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Adams, I can appreciate, Commissioner Adams, I can appreciate what you're saying. And you're absolutely right. I know you don't feel that pleasant with being called a swing vote, but this was a very difficult decision for each and every one of us here. But the bottom line is that we know that this community is lacking one thing, and that's economic development here for all citizens, for the masses of citizens. And as commissioners, what we try to do is study the best that we can, the information that's provided to us, to make sure that we make the best judgment call that we can for each and every citizen here. As was stated some time ago, this particular property has been sitting there for a number of years. And we knew eventually we were going to have to do something with that property. And I too, as I stated earlier, this has been very difficult for me, this incentive package. I did not agree with it at first, and I voted against it. And this is why we're here tonight, to talk about this incentive package. And so there have, things have been changed, information has been found out, and I'm comfortable with this direction in making that motion. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak.
We called a question.
And that's called a question. All those in favor of the motion?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Evans, Council Keith and Adams.
All those opposed?
Voting in opposition, Commissioners Lancaster, Fairclough and Evans.
Do we need to make the second motion now?
It's not urgent because right now, we, all this is a proposal, but if we have interest in this proposal, I would ask the court to be...
Well, let's finish it.
Let's finish it.
All right. Is there anybody who wants to make the second motion?
Yes, I make the second.
Go ahead, there you go.
I make the second motion to offer the incentives and direct staff to obtain an appraisal of the specific property in an extremely timely manner to establish a fair market value.
And that's, I intend that to be if Sanderson does want to talk to us about it. Sanderson expressed, yes, ma'am.
Because they may say, no, I don't want it.
Right. We can get it within 30 days. I'm not quite there.
Second to that motion? Second by Mr. Adams. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Voting in favor, and it's unanimous.
All right, we give just a minute to those that are leaving. We still got business to do, but they can get out of here and we'll, we're not going to take a break. We're just going to hesitate for a minute.
Tonight? Three months. Six months. Six months. It'd be six months. I thought I had put it at bay.
Along with the meeting, before Ms. Cannon continues with the agenda, there is one thing I'd like to say. On the zoning cases tonight, Mr. Tom Lloyd had to be out of town. His mother is real ill in New Jersey, and so Patty Spicer is going to fill in for him tonight. She is certainly capable of doing that. And with that, Ms. Cannon?
Yes, sir. Item 4A is an uncontested rezoning case, case P-15-06.
Any speakers?
There are no speakers.
How about item B? Can we take both of these at one time, Mr. Moorfield?
Yes, sir, if it's going to be the same result.
Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
All right. What's the issues of the boards on item, case P-15-06 and P-15-10?
Mr. Chair, can we make one motion for both?
Yes, that's what he said.
Okay. You want to do it?
Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Chair. I move that we find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff, including in the agenda package and is reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference?
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I'll continue to move and approve the rezoning of these, of these cases as recommended by the planning staff and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case. These cases, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference?
Second.
And second, motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. Item 4C is a contested conditional zoning case, case P-15-08.
Excuse me, ma'am, Ms. Cannon, it's not, or it is not conditional zoning.
Okay.
Can I ask her to repeat that, what she just said?
It is not a conditional zoning case. Case P-15-08 is a rezoning of 18.5 acres from A1 agriculture to R20 residential.
Rezone.
Or to a more restrictive zoning district. It's located on the north side of SR 1704 Palestine Road, east of US 401 Ramsey Street. It was submitted by John Colberth on behalf of Colberth Land and Timber Company and Phyllis P. Street, the property owners. The subject property shown in the center of the screen in the hatch pattern, it has approximately 120 feet of road frontage on Palestine Road. The surrounding zoning, for the most part, you have A1, RR, or R20, and then to the south is PND. The land use in the area, the, well, the subject property is woods and vacant currently. The number one, shown in red, is a cell tower with outside storage of salvage. Number two, also in red, is Donnie's salvage and groceries. Then number three is a CenturyLink substation. The, the yellow on the screen represents residential with the DW double wide, SW single wide. This is aerial view of the subject property. The subject property is outlined in blue. The hydroic soils on the subject property are just to the immediate, the very north side. The, what, there is Linden water in this area and would be extended to serve the subject property if the requests were approved. There's no sewer. It would be served by septic.
Can you go back to that slide just a minute, the one before that? Is that the Castle Brook subdivision there?
Yes, sir. And then photos of site. The 2030 land use plan calls for rural development at this location. The north central land use plan calls for suburban density. And just briefly, the R40, which recommended by the planning board, would allow a maximum of 20 lots with approximately 17 with the accounting for new street right of way. The R20, as requested, would be a maximum of 40 lots with 34 accounting for street right of way. In, in your agenda packet, you have the staff recommendation for both motions. If I could, I would like to read into the record a recommendation from the planning board for each of those motions. On the first motion for case P-15-08, the planning board moved to find the request, recommended that you move to find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan, but not, that did not find it reasonable or in the public interest because the size of lots being requested compared to the existing lots in the general area, the number of new septic tanks with all surrounding properties having shallow wells, and the soils and wetlands within the general area. And also, they would like the minutes to be, the planning board minutes to be incorporated. The second motion for case P-15-08, the planning board recommends that you move to approve the rezoning from A1 agriculture to R40 residential, which is as recommended by the planning board and reflected in the planning board's consideration of this case. And one more thing, I would like to make you aware that Mr. Charles Morris, the vice chair of the planning board, is here tonight as well if you have questions concerning the planning board's recommendation. And other than that, I'm available for questions.
Any questions for Ms. Spicer?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, sometimes we throw out R20s, R40s and everything else. So what we're talking about in an R20 is one house per every half acre, every 20,000 square feet. And R40 would only allow one house per...
Per just shy of an acre. Yes, sir.
We also have a zoning of R30.
Yes, sir, we do.
That we do have, which is 30,000, which is every three-quarter acre. I am, in looking at this, the 120 feet of roadside frontage coming in, I imagine that they've done the DOT surveys, and that seems to be sufficient for, how many houses are we talking about that could actually go in an R30, R40? I'm sorry, R20?
The R20 would be a max of 40, but that's not subtracting land area that would go in the right of way.
Okay.
So we, as an estimate, say 34.
And there's no distressed areas of this land that is wetlands or anything like that that we know about? Is that true?
Not in, in our database. We don't maintain the wetland layer.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
And Mr. Keith, I'll tell you, as I roll back there, not on this subject property, but kind of around, there was a lake back there, and I think the dam was breached, and the water came across. So that, whether they're going to repair it or not, I'm not sure, but there's nothing in that. And on the other side, it's like two small ponds, I think that have some fish in it, so I think right out there. And look at all of that.
Anybody else have any questions right now?
Yes, I just had one. This, this issue did make me pause, because whatever we do for this, I think we also would have to be ready to do for the other large plot that is coming, the ones that are zoned A1. Remember several years ago when we started, we knew that this, this day would come. But at R40, there would be public water.
No.
No public water.
That would, that would depend on the number of lots that were submitted and compared to the distance to the existing public water line.
Okay, because I, I just had difficulty. I remember Ms. Wheatley lives in the area, and I remember some discussions whenever she was here as a commissioner, and I know Mr. Morris was in the area also. So I just had some concerns. Whenever there is a difference of opinion between staff and the board.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know more reasons why. So I'm sitting on the fence.
That's why Mr. Lloyd strongly encouraged Mr. Morris to be here this evening if you wanted to hear from him as to the planning board's position.
I strongly, Mr. Chairman?
You want to hear from him? Okay, Mr. Morris?
Counsel usually wants to hear a little bit from me. When we heard this case, of course, we had a lot of the residents in the surrounding area came in. Part of our concern was, if you look at this satellite picture, the two lakes that are there during a big storm, it washed both of them out. And so there was a little concern regarding where all that water had gone. Also, if, Don, if you'll go back to one more slide, in the hydroic soils, the back piece did have some hydroic soils on there. And if you'll go back to the satellite. And then also, if you followed that blue line all the way out to Palestine Road, there's a lot of single wide and double wide folks there. there's a lot of single wide and double wide folks there. And fortunately, in that area, we can sink a well 22 to 50 feet down and get good water. And so a lot of those adjacent properties are serviced by the shallow wells. And I'm speaking for myself as well as the board. We thought that with that high density of septic tanks, that there could be a chance of some matriculation within the water table. And we thought the R40, which were the stick-built homes, would enhance the area and be consistent with the development of that area.
And I guess if you can go back one to the, to this one. The two ponds in the back don't come to this property, though, does it?
They go through the back, the, when they fail...
Not those, the two, you got two more back. Did they actually have water? Those actually have water, right?
Yeah, that's from the 295 extension.
Right.
And they do have water in it, but I don't believe they drain into that area.
And as you come down Palestine Road to the right, it's where you got those single wides and those double wides?
That's correct. That's where the RR is.
Right. And so with the R40, you're talking about an acre lot?
Talking about acre lot.
And so I guess my question would be, if it was me, on acre lot, if I was a developer, I'm not putting an acre lot of a house next to a double wide or a single wide trailer. I mean, if he's trying to develop the property, that would, I don't know that that would, that that's where I would be looking. And I think that the R20 is, especially if you bring, I think the water stops at Palestine and you can bring it down so you have water to that property. Is that correct? They got water down to Castle Brook?
Yeah, the Linden Water District ends there, and then at one point, we were doing some grant writing to try to extend that. But to your argument, across the street from that development is Meadow Branch?
Right, and with Meadow Branch, yes.
Okay, and of course, those homes probably average 350,000.
And you drive down the way, all the way back into the back, so that you don't front to where those trailers are?
Well, those two lots are front to where those trailers are.
There are two lots? And there are houses on those lots?
Not currently. They're vacant, but there's two houses. There are two lots there that front that area.
That nobody's built on?
Mr. Bowden preferred not to.
Thank you.
Any other question? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Speakers?
We have one speaker in favor, three speakers in opposition. Our first speaker in favor is Mr. Neil Yarborough.
Welcome, Mr. Yarborough.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Neil Yarborough. My address is 115 East Russell Street. I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal and for providing public water, extensions of this public water. To answer a question right off the bat, we cannot provide, we cannot do this project unless it's R20. When you see the types of improvements that are necessary, it just doesn't work. If you look, if you look at this property, you, first off, you can see what Castle Brook has done. And Castle Brook has been developed by the same developer that is the petitioner today. And he also lives in Castle Brook, and he also lives on a portion, an unzoned, a portion that's not being rezoned of this property. There, what you see there, that one was a summer, that's the summertime. That's, I think, I mean, that's the wintertime, that's the summertime version of this. I'd like to show you the neighborhood. This is Palestine Road at Ramsey Street, one of the developments that we knew were coming when 295 came. This development is not a surprise to anybody. It's not. We knew, we wanted it. We wanted it because we wanted 295. We knew this would be an access and a place for home families to support our military communities and our growing community as a whole. Again, Ramsey Street. This is the property. This is the entrance to the property. That's the cell tower. I'll show you the commercial property that's already been identified by Ms. Spiker. There's a cell tower across the property. This is the next-door neighbor. This is the house of the next-door neighbor, adjacent to the property. This is the single-wide mobile home that's next door to the project, that backs up to the property. This is the commercial property. I think it's on Mr. Bowden's property. This is another. This is the part that Ms. Spiker referenced, the Donnie's salvage grocery and those types of things. Don't know exactly what that is. There's an abandoned mobile home in the neighborhood on that same property. There's a portalet serving that house, that property. This is a very nice house across the street. If you'll see over to your right, it's going to be bordered by a single-wide mobile home subdivision on a dirt street. And I just show you that to show you a little bit, a better sense of the neighborhood. This is the developer's adjacent property. This is Castle Brook. This is what we want to build there. And I would point out to you that Castle Brook was built on R15 property, not R20, R15. Again, Castle Brook. These are the types of improvements that you get in an R20 zone that you cannot afford to do in an R40 zone. Water and sewer does not, you can't do it. You just can't do it. You've got fire hydrants. I've got my full 10 minutes.
You did.
Fire hydrants. I know time flies. Sidewalks, paved streets. Another detail of the construction level. This is the developer's home, which actually backs up to the subject property. This property looks into the, into the subject property to be done. This is again part of Castle Brook. This is one of the lakes that's owned, that the developer owns. Now, this is the staff recommendation. The staff recommendation is it meets all three of your land use programs. It is R20 for the subject property is consistent with the north central land use plan. R20 for the subject property is consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan. That should have been growth. R20 for the subject property is consistent with the Cumberland County land use policy plans. This is an exact excerpt from the staff's recommendation. There are no other districts considered suitable for this request. Looking at this property, it's very easy to see. Many of the people that appear to be opposed, many of the people that appear to be opposed to this live in RR property, which is developable on 20, you know, half acres, and actually mobile homes on half acres. So most of it is, if you look, it's RR, it's R20, it's R20, it's R15. There's commercial. Across the street is PND, which has a tremendous capacity for development. Everything around this property suggests that it should be R20. There were, as I understand it, there were two people that spoke against this at the planning board, and there was two people that spoke in favor of it, the developer and one of the neighbors who wanted public water. If we are to develop this plan, if we are to develop this part of Cumberland County in consistent with your own plans, all three of your plans, R20 is consistent. We would ask you not to rezone it, R40 or R30. It's not going to work. We don't need it. If you're going, if you can just, if you could just vote it up and down, R20, because we can't do the development anyway. Talking about the hydroic soils, this property's been engineered and soil-tested. We can get 25 lots in this property and still meet all the zoning because of the, you know, some lots are acre and a half, some lots are an acre, but in the whole, it's got to be R20. So there are only going to be 25 lots in this place. It's been approved by DOT for their road study. We have water available sitting and waiting to be put in on line with the town of Linden. We would strongly urge you to recommend, to adopt the planning staff's recommendation, your hired professionals in developing this project, so that we can continue to expand the water in this area and so that the development can go consistent with the current development. Nearly every track in this area is zoned for half-acre lots, and that's what R20 is. I'm going to reserve any additional time in case I need time for rebuttal. Thank you very much.
Next speaker?
Our first speaker in opposition is Ms. Heather Bowden.
Good evening. My name is Heather Bowden, 595 Palestine Road here in Linden. We oppose this rezoning. I am here representing most of Linden. We brought in a petition to the joint planning, which contained about 100 or so signatures who are opposed to this. I'm sure you all live where you live because you like it that way. We live in Linden because we like it quiet. We like our peace. We like knowing who our neighbors are. We like our security. And we love our water. We don't want to see it get ruined. We know that development's coming. We can't keep it out of everything, but we would like to try to keep it under control to a point. Castle Brook, yes, is just up the road from us, and it is R14, approximately 100 lots. What they didn't mention to you is that there are approximately 10 of those homes for sale, four for rent, six vacant approximately, there's a few I couldn't tell, and about three foreclosed on. That's about 23 of those, 100 lots, right now. We don't want that behind us. That threatens our security along with other things. This not only impacts, it impacts our schools as well. Raleigh Road Elementary is the elementary school that serves our pre-K through second, excuse me, first. We already have buildings out back to hold all of our children. We don't need more. It's a wonderful school. My children attended, but we don't need more. The more people and the more homes that we put on there, the more, as they said, more septic tanks. And the more septic tanks, the more chances of we having ruined our water. And I tell you, it's the best water around. If the board grants Mr. Colbert the right of R20, I know he says that he only wants to put 25 lots on there, but he has the opportunity to put more. If he's given R40, he is still given the right to develop that property. So we're giving some, but we're getting a little bit of what we need as well, which is not as many homes. If you look at the subdivision across the street as we were showing you, they're beautiful homes, bigger lots. And, I mean, it's really nice. We understand that the water could come further down to supply the new subdivision. We don't want it. We love the water we have. As I went through the neighborhood trying to get the petition signed, do I have longer or not? May I finish one last sentence?
Make your last statement.
The, one gentleman I spoke with, who lives nearby, who was unable to sign my petition because he is in some of the doings with this, understood when I asked him why he moved to Linden. And he said it was because of the space, the peace, and the quiet. We'd like to keep it that way.
All right. Can you, before you leave, I want to ask you a question, but can you go back to the diagram of the, and Ms. Bowden?
Bowden, yes, sir.
Where do you live?
We are, okay, the, you see the dotted line? We're the big lot right there.
Okay.
No, that one right there, yes, sir. The house they showed in the picture, actually. The nice house, the real nice house with the very front, big front porch.
Our next speaker is Mr. James, I'm sorry, is this Beard Bond?
Good evening, county commissioners. My name is Jamie Bowden. I live at 595 Palestine Road. Heather Bowden is my wife. I would like you guys to agree with what the county has already, the zoning board has already agreed with because of mainly it's the soil samples. That area to me is wetter than what it looks, and according to Deener, that is a creek back there. I've looked on the map. Growing up there, I've lived there all my life. That's a creek that runs back there. If you follow it on Deener's map, that tributary goes all the way to the Cape Fear River. Like I said, we had 80 people or so sign a petition for the area to say in that, that, you know, the houses are that way. And it's not that we don't want a neighborhood. We know a neighborhood's coming. We know development's coming. We kind of understand that. That how, that zone is like 1.2 miles off of 401. And my understanding and reading, that zoning issue that y'all had said anything one mile off of Ramsey Street would be developed, not 1.2, but one mile. There are several R20s in the area that could be developed as there are now. And if Mr. Colbert does supply water to that area, does that mean he's going to supply my water a half a mile down the road? No, I'm going to have to pay for that line to be tapped in just like he did. Who's, are you guys going to approve free water to go down the other half mile down the road? Because at the last meeting, he said it was $50,000 to run that water line from where it stops at Castle Brook now to the beginning of his subdivision. I have property about a mile down the road, so if his septic tanks mess up my shallow well water, is he going to provide that tapped water all the way down for me for another 50,000, or do I have to pay for that? Or is the county going to be responsible for that? That's my biggest concern. I understand we want neighborhoods with water and sewer. Sewer's not there. Sewer won't be there for a long time. You need, and speaking of that, there is a lot of folks there in mobile homes and houses. They pay taxes too.